Good afternoon, welcome to Peoria City Council's study session for Tuesday, March 4th with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Here.
Councilmember O'Vero.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Clalat.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Jelenek.
Here.
And council liaison Pryor.
Here.
Thank you. During the study session, we can interact with the city staff. We do not take any votes. We cannot approve or disapprove of anything. You have two subjects up. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Councilmembers, good evening. We have two items on the study session agenda this evening. And the first is continuation of a discussion that we began last in October, I believe. And it's an evaluation of the working of the council policy subcommittees. And to make the presentation and lead the discussion tonight is Tammy Sri from our Government Affairs Office. Tammy?
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor and council, good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on the council subcommittees. My presentation's going to provide just a brief overview of the policy. I want to discuss the process flow of the items that go to the subcommittees. I want to give you an update on the subcommittee activities. And also discuss, going forward, how staff can improve our quality of service to you. If there's something we can do to improve your experience on the subcommittees. The city council began discussions to create council subcommittees in June of 2011. Of course, the subcommittee's purpose is to review potential public policy issues. In September 2011, the council adopted the council subcommittee policy, which authorized six subcommittees: community culture, public service, general government, policy and appointments, public safety, and sustainable development. The council policy was amended in February of 2012, and in essence consolidated six subcommittees into four. And so, community culture and public safety were combined, as well as sustainable development and public services. Three council members are assigned to a subcommittee. Each subcommittee elects a chair. Council subcommittee meetings are adhered to all public meeting laws. The entire city council receives the council subcommittee agenda packets, and there's a designated meeting date and time each month for the subcommittees to meet. And of course, if there's no items, then the subcommittee does not meet on that particular day. Staff provides an important part of this activity. We provide administrative support. We perform analysis of the policy issues. We prepare reports and provide relevant information and develop the presentations that are presented to the subcommittees. Now, in regards to the agenda flow, when an item is submitted to a subcommittee, it can go basically two different directions. There's two different processes, and I want to just walk through those. First, a council member submits a potential policy item to the city manager. The city manager reviews it and determines, does it have a policy? Is there policy decision-making? If it doesn't, then the item goes to staff, and then we work with the council member on that issue. But if it is a policy, potential policy issue, then it goes to the subcommittee. The subcommittee's purpose is to vet the item, to analyze it, discuss it. And at that point, the council members then vote unanimously in recommendation of the item, or they vote, it comes out lacking an unanimous vote. Either way, the item goes to the council study session. The second way that we have seen items go through the process, the first part's the same. A council member gives the potential item to the city manager. City manager determines whether it's a policy or not. The item, if it is, can go to a subcommittee. At this point, the subcommittee, again, vets the items, they analyze it, they discuss it. And there's been times where it's been decided that although, conceptually, it sounded like a really good idea, but after analyzing it and discussing it with staff, we realize maybe potentially administratively, the issue could be taken care of, or operationally, it could be taken care of. And the individual who submitted the item, the council member that submitted the item, has been typically on the subcommittee and has agreed with that, as well as the subcommittee members. In that case, the item goes no further than the subcommittee, and is listed in your monthly reports as information discussion only. Now, if the committee, again, decides that it is worthy, is a potential policy item, then it goes to the study session. So those are kind of the two routes that we've seen with the last over two years of how an item goes through the committees. If you look at the activities of the committees, it's been about approximately two and a half years, we've received 63 total items have been submitted. Community culture and public safety's had the most, followed by policy and appointments, and sustainable development and public services. Policy and appointments looks at agenda items, but they have one item that they, it comes up every month, and that's the appointments to the boards and commissions. So that's counted as one in the 17. If you look at it from a historical standpoint, for the last 10 quarters, the first quarter received, and we received, the most items. And since then, it's dropped significantly, but somewhat maintained up to, you know, between one and five items. We have a meeting scheduled for this month. At this point, I believe the only committee that has an item to discuss is a policy and appointments committee. But there could be items coming. And at this point, I'd want to discuss going forward. It's important to staff that we provide excellent service, and we provide you the support that you need. We've been in this process now for about two and a half years, and I wanted to receive and ask, is there anything we can be doing to help you with the subcommittees? Is there any kind of support that you need, that you haven't been receiving? Any suggestions?
Anybody? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's been working well. The staff has been well-prepared, and we go through the topic in detail, and have a discussion. As you say, sometimes then it moves on, sometimes it doesn't, but I think it's good because you get a chance with your other colleagues to look at an item and discuss it, and look at its merits.
Thank you.
Maybe you could go over for us the genesis of why did that particular council feel it was important to actually have subcommittees? Because to me, whether the subcommittee votes yes or no on something, it still goes automatically to a study session. So what was the purpose of establishing subcommittees?
Two and a half years ago, when these discussions took place, I believe the genesis was to have a more open communication with the public on specific items. And so, having a subcommittee during, that looked at specific items, then maybe residents who had an interest in a specific item could come and talk to the subcommittee about that. I also believe it was an opportunity for an item to be looked at with maybe a smaller group, smaller amount of council members, to basically vet an item through, and to determine whether, you know, it has some potential for a council policy. But again, they do go forward even if there's not a unanimous vote.
Yeah, they don't always go forward. Sometimes they drop down.
Right.
Particularly if the person that brought it up says, now that we've had this discussion, I don't feel it needs to go forward.
Exactly.
So they don't always. In fact, it's about 50/50, isn't it?
Councilmember Ames, it's about, I think, 17 of those 63 were items that were conceptual ideas. I mean, there's something that looked like potential, and that's the whole idea of the subcommittee, is trying to discuss it through. And in those cases, where the person who submitted it also felt at the end, yeah, that maybe doesn't make sense as for a policy, but maybe something we could do as administratively assist them, then the item didn't go further to the study session.
Do we have any idea how many citizens actually show up for these? Because I sit on two subcommittees, and I don't know, it's been 14 months now, I guess. In all the subcommittees that I've, meetings I've sat in, we've never had a single citizen show up for those meetings.
Councilmember Patena, I try to attend most of the subcommittees. I can say, there have been times when some citizens have come and spoken about the issue, and there have been meetings where there haven't been any citizens that have come.
Anything else?
You know, I've seen the genesis of the subcommittees, and I've seen how subcommittees can be abused, to go around the current system that we have, the one where we were elected to work as a body, and to be in a transparent situation, such as the one that we are in today, versus some meeting that happens, yes, it's posted, but it's not televised, it's sort of not as official, because it's just part of the council. And, you know, in fact, they don't have any authority, other than to move it to the council as a whole, or let it die. So I am not in favor of letting subcommittees continue as they have been, and I would like to suggest that we talk about improvements along this line. We've got some subcommittees that it seems like every council member wants to be a part of, and the rest that don't even hardly meet. So I think that they're not transparent. I think that, you know, really, they're only there for the sake of going around the system that we have, of putting things in front of the public in this fully-elected body. You know, the way that we're supposed to operate as elected officials. So I'm not supportive of them. I think the ones that have specific tasks, such as putting people on boards and commissions, has a reason to exist, because they function to complete a goal. The ethics subcommittee also has a function. It needs to be a body if it's ever needed. It's kind of an emergency thing. Other than that, I don't see any need to have any of these subcommittees as they are. They're redundant. If something comes to the subcommittee and then it just dies, well, who decided that that dies? Three council members, instead of all of us. And if something comes to the subcommittee, and they hear it and pass it along, well, what purpose was that? It's got to come to the council as a whole, anyway. So I'm not seeing any reason for these subcommittees, as they are listed here, to exist. Of course, I'm certainly open to hearing someone tell me why they should exist.
Mr. Leary?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I supported the subcommittee, and I'll support it again. Like Bill says, a lot of citizens don't come. When we point people to the board, how many people come? Just the ones that's going to get appointed. If you remember correctly, we had a subcommittee meeting about sanitation, the whole place was packed. You couldn't even sit on it. It was all packed, a lot of citizens. If a citizen has a problem, and comes to me, and I say, well, let's bring it to the subcommittee, those people show up. Not the whole city, not the rest of constituents, the people that's involved will be there. And that's the whole idea, you know, so they can hear it. If we turn it down, we turn it down, but if it goes forward, it'll go to the study session. The point is, before, if somebody had a problem, we want to bring it to a study session, city manager and mayor say no. So this is why we have the committee, to bring it to the study session. So this is why I do support this. And if you remember correctly, I'm the one that brought it down from six to four.
Yeah, you were.
Okay? And that's as far as I'm going with that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I support having subcommittees. It's a chance to vet various policies and issues, and some of them are brought up by citizens, and they do attend these meetings. And I think they're valuable, because it gives us a chance, as colleagues, to get together and talk about things. We don't have to worry about violating open meeting laws, bringing other council members together to talk about an issue. And all council members are notified, and if it's an issue that they are concerned about. I have attended some subcommittees that I am not a member of, because I was interested in the topic as well. And I think they do serve a purpose for, as council members, to get together with one another, and to look at important issues that do affect our citizens and do affect policies. And subcommittees are a very common kind of way of doing that. They exist in other cities. They certainly are humongous at the state legislature and at Congress. And I don't think we're overburdening ourselves by doing this.
I don't think the legislature's really a good example.
Don't they have a lot of stuff?
Yeah. I'm sure you wouldn't be like, suggestions for improvement?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if you remember correctly, I still got a couple that are sitting on there. I'm still waiting to hear from Steve Kemp on those problems with cats, the guy was going to shoot them all and throw them in the riverbed or someplace. So we had a meeting with those people. I'm still waiting to bring it to a subcommittee. Also, if you remember correctly, we had a subcommittee meeting with the guy in a wheelchair, and our blind guy, that wanted the trash containers in a gutter, instead of on the sidewalk. And it passed on the subcommittee, but hadn't come to a study session yet. And this is what we're waiting for. Thank you.
Anybody else? Suggestions for improvement? Want to make any changes?
I am suggesting that we revert to the subcommittees that actually have tasks, and the remainder of the kinds of issues, such as, you know, a person who has some handicap issues, that those kinds of things come before the council as a whole. That's where the decision is going to be made, anyway. Why drag that person to two meetings, one of no consequence? So I would suggest that we have the boards and commissions, the ethics committee, and...
Not-for-profit?
And the not-for-profit, right. Ones that have actual tasks and duties. And the rest of the issues, if a policy issue comes up, it comes before this council. We are the ones who decide on policy issues. That is my suggestion.
Any actions? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I like the current system, and it allows council members to bring something up that can make its way to a study session. Right now, it's just really, if the mayor puts it on the agenda. So this gives us an opportunity to bring things up that might make their way to an actual council agenda, where we vote on it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, we were elected to represent the people, and if we have to have a meeting every day, we have to represent the people. And, you know, I don't mind coming down here at night and representing people on the subcommittee. Someone like people has to work, and they don't want to rush down here. I can understand that, but don't deprive the people of having their meeting. When I tell them that we're going to have a subcommittee meeting, and then from there, we'll see if it goes to the study session, they tickle a dent just to have that, you know? So I think it's important to keep it. I think it's important that we, excuse me, to continue this. And I support all the ones that we have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Clalat?
Can I ask how we get something on a study session agenda, you know, like before we had subcommittees, or how we could do it without them? Can somebody tell me?
Generally, it comes to me. We put it into the subcommittee list. If you've been reading your stuff, you see the subcommittee list, what's pending, what's not. And then we take those topics in what I consider to be the order of importance.
And so, do you sometimes just throw things away, so that you don't allow council members to discuss issues? You never do that?
No.
So all of these things are going to come before the council as a whole?
Yep.
Anyway?
And one of the reasons a lot of these issues haven't been heard is because of the amount of time we've spent this year on labor negotiations. The council only takes so much time to do study sessions, and we've added extra Tuesdays to try to catch up. So we're catching up.
In spite of the fact that some people work, we still come and do these meetings?
Yeah.
Imagine that.
Any other comments? Carla?
You say you bring everything, if somebody comes up to you and says, I got a situation I want to bring to a study session, and you say no, so what we got to do is get four signatures to put it on the study session. That's why we want to bring it down to three. So this is what I'm talking about, you know? And we just don't, we just want the people to have their day in court, that's all, whether it's in a subcommittee or a study session. I figure, subcommittee, then a study session, then if it goes to the council, fine. If not, then that's another story.
Anybody else? Yes, we are. Okay, we have a suggestion to... We'll deal with Carla's suggestion, delete it as is. Yes? No?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, as ever. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tammy. Are we ready for the next issue, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, very good. This issue will be presented by Steve Berg, our chief assistant city attorney. And it's related to the last discussion, in a way. I think what was just touched on in some of the conversation that the council just had was...
Hold on a second. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think as part of the subcommittees, didn't you list who was going to be currently on each of these subcommittees? Isn't that part of this document I received?
No, it's part of the regular agenda meeting. You didn't read your agenda?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, okay.
We deal with it.
But it showed up here, too, didn't it?
No, that's just, pass.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Ames, that item is on the regular agenda later this evening.
Yeah, I know it's on the right, but I thought it was here, too.
Okay. Or was it? Oh, the second issue is related to the conversation we just had, about how things are placed on a council regular agenda. And as you know, the process that has been outlined in the city charter has, in the rare circumstance that a mayor might choose to not honor a request to put something on an agenda, the charter allows for a process by which an item can be moved to an agenda with four council members concurring with that request. As the state of the law has changed over the years, that has created a situation which arguably can create a problem with what's often termed as a serial meeting. What Steve Berg will be presenting is a way that that can be addressed, to assure that the city council is never put in a position of having to have any open meetings challenges that might be sustained. So with that, by way of introduction, I think I probably said that right, I hope.
You did, and you covered a whole part of my introduction. So that's good. I had a short presentation, it's even going to be shorter, so...
Sorry to steal your time.
Now, as Mr. Swenson indicated, this current charter provision, Article II, Section 15, by this requirement of having four council members to agree on moving an agenda item forward to a meeting, does create an open meeting law concern. This is something that Steve Kemp, as city attorney, has regularly given the opinion on over the years, as it's come up, and it comes up infrequently, but it has been a longstanding concern of his. And I will talk a little bit, as we address this, or attempt to address this problem, about potential open meeting law concerns. Mr. Kemp wanted me to make clear to all of you tonight, that we are just talking about potential. In the history of his time, anyway, as city attorney, we haven't seen evidence of an actual open meeting law violation in Peoria, so we're good to that extent. However, he is very concerned that the potential exists, very real potential, of an open meeting law violation in the future, if we don't try to flesh out this charter provision a little better. So that's what we're trying to do. And the two main ways that that could happen, when you take just one sentence, really, out of the charter, and try to figure out, how could four members of the council get together and discuss it, is one of two ways. The first is, one council member does something in writing, a letter, or some other written communication, email, and either broadcasts it to a group of other council members, or maybe, as Mr. Swenson mentioned, the serial, or the wheel approach, we call it, where it just goes to one council member, who forwards it to another, to another. That written correspondence, as it gets around, if enough council members read it, then agree with it, discuss, and reach some sort of common consensus to move that item forward to council, that's one way it can happen. And then the second way, of course, is orally. Council members in a meeting format, face-to-face, or over the phone, or however it might be. Again, whether it was a group of you doing that, or one at a time, in a wheel or spoke fashion, getting around that way, to talk about and agree to, let's request that an item be placed on an agenda. Either way, whether it's done in writing or orally, that group of the council members coming together to do that creates a very real concern of an open meeting law violation, because by having that discussion, you are in essence creating a meeting of the city council. And of course, when you have a meeting, it's supposed to be noticed and posted, and all those things that the law requires, and in these cases, when those discussions are going on, that's not happening. So it's a really very serious and potential concern, that under either case, the discussions happen, and those discussions would violate the law. So after the discussion, where Mr. Kemp most recently explained his legal opinion at last month's Policy and Appointments Council Subcommittee, the mayor did ask Mr. Kemp, is there something we could do? Is there some way that we can eliminate this risk of the charter being, or the charter process creating an open meeting law violation? And what Mr. Kemp came up with was a way to amend the council, or amend the city code to do that. Sorry, so those were the two potentials. All right. So as shown in the draft ordinance, which is in all of your packet, Mr. Kemp did create an amendment to the city code. Now, it is our opinion that if the proposed concept that's in the ordinance were to be adopted, that would fully address the legal concerns that we have, and that we would be protected under that charter provision of any potential open meeting law violation. So the ordinance would accomplish the goal that we set out for. All right, so what does the ordinance do? And first, it does, it confirms the current practice, which is, of course, the mayor has the authority to put an item on the agenda, either through his own volition, or if somebody else requests an item to go on. So that remains, it's codified, it would just be in the code, as it currently, as the current process exists. But what this code provision, or the ordinance does, to create a new code provision, is address the other situation. That situation where a council member asks the mayor to put an item on an agenda, and the mayor rejects it. So what would happen? So under this process, the first step would be, the council member could submit in writing a request to place the item on an agenda, and that written request would go to the city clerk's office. So the city clerk would receive this request, and then provide it in writing to all the council members. You would all receive the request. Then you would have eight business days, from receipt of that written information, the request for the council agenda item, to come to the city clerk's office, physically come to the office, and if you wanted to, sign off on that request, and add your signature to the list. If four council members signed that agenda request, then the clerk would notify the mayor in writing that that had occurred, and then the agenda item would move forward to a council agenda. If not, if not four signatures were reached, if not four people signed it, then the item would not move forward at that point. So this change, by kind of taking the process and having it go through the city clerk's office, really would eliminate the potential that we have, that you all, as council members, would need to communicate among yourselves to decide whether to have an item request go to council for a council meeting. This way, it's all done through the clerk, you're presumably going there one at a time, you're not having the sort of communications and conversations that would lead to an open meeting law violation. So this process, again, we believe would really insulate us from the open meeting law concern, and if this amendment was, this ordinance was done to amend the city code, then the charter provision, from our standpoint, legally would be fine, we wouldn't have any concerns. So that's really it, and I am happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions? Right.
Yeah, and this process has been used a few times over the last couple of years, but I didn't see that the city clerk sent the specific request to everyone. Isn't that the same thing? Doesn't that become going from one council member to another council member, what one council member suggests? Or is that not the case? It's just, there's something there, and you can go and look at it?
No, it would be, the clerk would provide notice to all seven of you, that that request had been submitted by the individual council member, and then...
She would spell out the request?
Yes. And that's okay. You would... Yes. And that's okay. You would need to know whether you wanted to go to the clerk's office to sign off and approve it. But you wouldn't be communicating with any other council member. This is the city clerk in charge of this kind of communication process. So that really insulates us from the open-meeting law concern.
I'm thinking about that. The other is to have a change to our charter, right, and have the citizens vote on it, because we've been looking at that. In fact, that was in the Subcommittee.
Yeah, the request that we had...
And the request there was to change it to three. And so if three council members spoke with one another, that would not be a violation of the open-meetings law. And they could go into more specifics about, you know, why they thought this should be an agenda item.
Vice Mayor, yeah, we were asked specifically to address the, could we deal with this legal issue under the charter without amending the charter? So that's the main focus of this. And we're certainly not agendicized to talk about the merits of the charter amendment. That'll happen later. But to answer the legal question, if you do have only three council members required to sign off on something, it does reduce the likelihood of an open-meeting law violation, but it's still possible. There, the Attorney General, when he's issued opinions on this topic before, says, you know, "Once you start that process, you know, can you stop it at three?" Or "Does it become difficult to not have others get involved?" So really, anytime any more than one of you are talking about any issue, you start to increase the likelihood of a potential open-meeting law violation. So three is a little better than four, I suppose, but it wouldn't necessarily eliminate this problem about how we place items on the agenda. This process really would be a really kind of good, solid process that would insulate all of you from the open-meeting law concern because it would all be done through the clerk.
Yeah, and, you know, I was aware of this process, and we could do this process with three as well, right? It wouldn't have to be four.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Berg, you know what? At the Subcommittee level, I actually voted for this to move forward, but that was based on the recommendation at the time by Mr. Kemp that there, it was easy to have a violation of the open-meeting law. I was in conflict with my own vote, only because I felt that to put something on the agenda would, you know, to have a majority of the council members just determine something was important enough to go on the agenda, that was an issue with me. And based on what you're putting forward here today, I would be okay with this particular concept. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Mr. Rivera?
Mr. Berg, can you explain, I know you said three would be better than four, but can you please explain why it would be better?
Again, because you're a seven-member body, so four of you create a quorum, then that's, you know, almost on its face going to create a potential of an open-meeting law violation. The simple fact that the four of you would have gotten together to discuss the substantive issue of placing an item on agenda is going to get you there. Three doesn't necessarily do that on its face. Again, it still creates the possibility of it. Again, two would as well. Three gets you closer, and then four kind of tips it over the side, but that's the difference, is the quorum, in essence, of the four of you, because you're a seven-member body.
Because I see a big difference between three and four. When you start requiring four members of the council, and four council members agree to put something on the agenda, it may be the case that not a lot of substance is going on, or any substance, but when you have four council members agreeing to put something on the agenda, that could lead into an agreement by those council members in supporting the idea going forward. And that's not possible under the scenario where three council members would say, "Okay, fine, put it on the agenda," because you need four council members to get, or four votes, to get something approved.
And again, Councilmember Rivera, the substance of the four versus three will be addressed later. What we've got before us is the current charter provision. Until it's amended, that's what we have. And this city code amendment would address the problem with the current city charter.
I'm not talking about the charter amendment. What I'm saying is, even under this scenario, Mr. Berg, there's still a lot of opportunity for the open-meeting law violation.
It is not our belief that there would be a very real likelihood of that. This process really creates a way that the open-meeting law would be complied with, and in every case, if this code provision was adopted and followed.
Well, and the reason I say that is, if it takes four signatures, and the first signature goes through, second person responds directly to the city clerk, third person and fourth person responds, one way or another, once it's put on the agenda, there's going to be understood that there's going to be four council members in support of whatever's being put on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and so this is something for us to consider. We're still going to be looking at those amendments, right? They're coming to study session.
I believe so. That's what the Subcommittee recommended.
Okay. And I guess my concern with four, even though, you know, the city clerk sends that to, I guess, all seven, then council members can start talking, "What do you think about that?" Right? And so then it does become conversation among the council members.
We would hope that would not happen. That would not be our legal advice.
Okay, I'm just thinking, you know, humans start saying, "What do you think about that?" They're going to say, "Did you talk to anyone else?" Or, "I think it's better to stick with three." But anyway, that's a later discussion.
The problem I have with three is, A, it was rejected by the voters' wants, and number two, what are you going to do? You've got something you really want to get done, so you ask Tony, he says, "Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda." You ask Bill, he says, "No." Now, can he approach another one?
No.
Ideally, no.
Okay. So it's the same problem. If you don't, if you don't have four people who are at least interested in discussing it in open session, you're a lot. Because otherwise, I mean, you asked the wrong person. It's not going to get, if it was three, it's not going to get on the agenda anyhow, because otherwise, you're violating the open-meeting law by seeking that third person when somebody turns you down. And besides, if you don't have, if you don't have a council that's interested in looking at and discussing the issue, council, potential council majority, why would it come forward? You open yourself up to all kinds of frivolous kinds of agenda items.
No, you don't know, but you would like to see something come as an agenda item, and it's discussed, and then it might be, you know, four or five, or vote for it, or all six or something.
That's what this does. It sets up that process. I mean, everybody would get the text of whatever the suggestion was. You decide, "Well, I would like to have this come to a study session," then you go over and sign. And that's when the discussion about it takes place. It's not supposed to take place between you and somebody else in your office. That's, you know, that's a no-no, because ask him.
Well, it's not supposed to take place until it comes to the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else?
But, you know, we do check with maybe one other council member before we decide, "Should we pursue this?" Right? And that's okay, to talk with one other council member. Right?
It can become a slippery slope, so I think Mr. Kemp's advice is to be very cautious on that, yeah.
Any other comments? Shall we bring this back as an agenda item? Tony?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. No, that is it for our study session this evening. You've got an opportunity for a break now before the regular session, and dinner is in the back.
We adjourn until seven o'clock.